The following is a live broadcast of a Lone Star Community Radio Program. Recorded and broadcasted live on IRloneStar.com, Conroe's FM 104.5, 106.1, and Facebook.com/IRLoneStar. For more information on this show, please visit our show page at IRloneStar.com/shows. To sponsor or donate to this program, visit our donate page at IRloneStar.com/donate, or email us at lscrstudios@gmail.com, or give us a call at 936-666-1084. Lone Star Community Radio Production and Broadcast is possible by folks like you. So sponsor and donate today.
You're listening to Lone Star Community Radio on 104.5 KCZW LP Conroe, and 106.1 KCCZ LP Conroe, and worldwide at IRloneStar.com.
Hello, everyone. I'm Margie Taylor of Taylorized PR, and welcome to Conroe Culture News today on Monday, June 29, 2020. Yes, we're still in 2020, believe it or not, but amazingly, we are moving into July this week. Let's see what that brings, since each week is different. So this is, we are broadcasting from downtown Conroe at Lone Star Community Radio, and it's a wonderful day today, a little humid, a little hot, but again, you know, we're approaching July. So you can listen on FM 104.5, 106.1, and live streaming on IRloneStar.com. So my guest today will be Charlie Riley. He's the Commissioner of Precinct 2, and along with him will be Bruce Berger, Chief of Staff, and Michael Silvio from Precinct 5 also. So first, before we get into that, this is sponsored by Roger Stein Chiropractic, and she is located by Conroe High School and Taco Bell. So if you are a new patient, see how she's giving back. It only costs $25 to get an exam, and it goes back to CASA. So that's a great thing. And if you don't know, early voting starts today. That means you can go to any of the five, six, five or six open areas where you can go vote, and you don't have to live in that community. They're located all over the county. There's one in East County. There's one here in downtown Conroe. There's Montgomery, Magnolia, and two in the Woodlands. So how many is that? Six, I think.
We've got, we've got two with an event center now.
Okay, so that's right. That's right. There's the event center on 1488 as well. So anyway, you can go vote wherever it's closest to you, if you work in one of those areas. And that goes on through this week, and then it stops July, it goes through till July 2, which is Friday, then again on Sunday, July 5, and then it starts again the 6th through the 10th. Voting day is July 14. So what you're voting for, if you're eligible, is the Constable in Precinct 2, Gene DeForest and Daniel Pena. And then everybody can get out there and vote for either Vince Santini or Eric Yalick for the new 457th District Judge, and then Scott Goldman is running against Jay Wright for Chief Justice in the 9th District Court of Appeals. That's a big one. That's over 10 counties. But Montgomery County is the leading one. So it's very important that you get out there and vote, because it's your right. And mask, no mask, it's entirely up to you, but just go vote. So also, other news, the first Thursday concert and market days, which were scheduled for Thursday, July 2, are now canceled. And I don't know when they will start again. We have had April, May, June, and now July canceled, but we really need to get control of the COVID pandemic, and everybody needs to do their part to make that happen. So we are a Texas music-friendly community in downtown Conroe, and you can listen to live music at the Red Brick Tavern, Pacific Yard House. They have Sunday brunch at Pacific Yard House and the Red Brick Tavern every Sunday with live music. This Thursday, you can listen to Cody Hibbard at Pacific Yard House and the blues from Johnny Riley on Saturday, July 4. Have you ever performed at any of those places, Red Brick or Pacific Yard House?
No, I haven't.
Wow. It's on your to-do list. Okay, the Red Brick Tavern hosts Buck Yeager every Thursday evening at 7:00 PM. So he debuts a singer-songwriter joining him on the stage, and those are all within walking distance here. And if you don't know, 202 Main is now open. They opened last Thursday. We had a little pub crawl when it was legal last week in five venues with live music. And we're going to do that the last Thursday of every month through October is the game plan. And 202, you can call them to schedule your event or meeting for any period of time, and they also are building a beautiful outdoor space that will be available with a stage, a bar, a coffee bar, and food. So, and if your stress level is really high right now for so many reasons, because you don't know what the future brings, did you know that acupuncture can assist with migraines, pain management? It can help with stopping of smoking, overeating, allergies, all of that, and it's within sight of the studio here. Allison Bayer is the local downtown Conroe expert, and she does clear-choice acupuncture. Have you guys ever tried acupuncture?
No.
Me either. But hey, if it works for all these things, she does Chinese herbal medicine, cupping, and nutrition for the well-being of men, women, and pediatric health. So clear-choice acupuncture for an appointment. So with that, we're going to just start talking about everything that's going on in Commissioner Precinct 2 area. And Precinct 5, with you, sir, anything you can tell us, because you all, and that's always interesting. How is it that we have a Precinct 5 Constable's Office with Precinct 2, Charlie?
Well, thank you for having us, by the way, and we appreciate you all inviting us over here today. Each Commissioner Precinct is divided up by population, so you have to have a certain amount of people for each precinct. And there's four county commissioners and a county judge. County judge is countywide. Precinct constables and precinct JPs, they go by state legislature, district boundaries, or precinct boundaries, and senator boundaries, precinct boundaries.
That's a little different.
Yeah. I probably got a population right now of 190,000 people, and Precinct 5's probably got 120 or 115, 120, because the precinct's a little smaller. And it's getting pretty close to the time where we're going to probably have to add another precinct for JP and Constable. You know, we've got Precinct 5, we don't have Precinct 5 Commissioners. You'll never have more.
And that always seemed weird.
It's just the population. That's how you have to do it. You have to keep your population at a certain amount, and we'll end up with a Precinct 6, Precinct 7.
So you think there'll be another Commissioner for a Precinct 5?
No, there will never be another. There will never be more than four Commissioners in a county.
Because that's what, it says that's what's designated?
Yes, that's the law.
Is it the same in every county?
Yes. Every county in, in the state of Texas.
I just get nods over here.
Every county in the state of Texas will have four Commissioners and a county judge, no matter how big or how small.
Okay. So you have been Commissioner for, this is your sixth year?
I'm in my sixth year, yes. I've worked for Montgomery County since November of 2001. 14 years with the previous Commissioner, and I'm in my second term, second year of my second term as the Commissioner.
So, oh, good. All right. So then, we can ask you all these questions about Precinct 2. We can talk about that. And you're the educated, experienced guy.
Well, I would hope so. I mean, I've, you know, you hear all these people talk about what all's happened in not only Precinct 2, Montgomery County. I don't want to go through that I was here when there was a two-lane road, and there was nothing between here but a four-way stop sign. I mean, we've all heard those stories. I always like to tell people, where's your precinct? Well, it's over on the west side from anything, Highway 105, south down all the way to Spring Creek and Tomball. That's our precinct. It's about 282 square miles. And if you haven't been west of 45, or especially west of 2978 in the last two or three weeks, something's changed. I mean, if it's happening, it's happening in Precinct 2. It's all coming that way. With the new mobility that we've got, you know, we've improved 1488 tremendously. And I say "we," that's working with Text Dot.
A lot of businesses.
A lot of business on 1488, a lot of new developments on 1488, and with the overpass at the high school on 1488 at 149 and the railroad track, that just, that just kind of opened up that whole side of the world. And we're continuing on with 1488 through Magnolia as a four-lane road, working with Text Dot. And of course, our new 249 toll road opened up in March from the Harris County line up to Pinehurst, and Text Dot has told us that their portion of 249 will be open by August the 1st, from Pinehurst to 1488. That'd be another big, big improvement for mobility on the west side of the town.
My husband travels that way every day.
It really, it has really, it has really opened up that side of the world.
So why do you think so many people are going out that direction? Because you're increasing the mobility. Why do you think all the growth?
I think because of the pristine land that's still available, big tracts of land out on the west side.
Undeveloped opportunities?
Undeveloped, but there's people that have brought the property, and they're looking at bigger pieces of property. They're looking at bigger tracts, you know, acre sites instead of a quarter of an acre, or 50 or 60-foot lots. We've got a lot of big, nice, master-planned developments that are, they're just waiting on two things. They're waiting on 1488 to be completed through Magnolia, or maybe three things, FM 249, and they're waiting on the relief route around Magnolia. Once those are there, all these developments are going to take off. And we had a meeting with the guy Friday, was it Friday, Thursday? Friday. This got about 5,700 acres of land up north of 1486. And when that road, when 249 comes through there, he will break ground on his development. And you'd be surprised at how many people are living way up in Grimes County and Waller County that are waiting on that road to get here, so they can get to Houston. They work in Houston. There's, I probably got about 19, 20 buddies of mine that are firemen in Houston that live in Grimes County, way up in Beedies and Carless. And they're driving me crazy about wanting to know when 249 is going to be complete, so they can hit 249 and get to work in a matter of 45 minutes, instead of taking an hour and a half, two hours. So the people using these roads are not just here. They're coming from all parts of the country trying to get through here.
And how long have you been in Magnolia? Living there?
I moved down to Magnolia in 1971, when I was 14 years old, from the north side of Houston, just kicking and screaming, not wanting to come, because I had all of my buddies were.
I know how that's like.
All of my buddies were on the north side of Houston, so I just didn't want to come. But it didn't take me very long to realize that it's probably the best thing that ever happened, getting out of the, getting out of the north side.
You live on property too, out there?
We did it one time, but we've got rid of most of it. So we, I just live right in town, right there in Magnolia. I got a quarter-acre lot, you know, a little subdivision with about 60 homes in it.
I would figure you'd be on 50 acres or something.
I've had more than a-
Like your buddy that works for you.
I've had more than 100 acres once before, and it's just a pain to try to keep up with.
Well, that's what my husband says.
It really, it's a lot of work.
The mowing and the feeding the animals and so on.
And keeping the fences and keeping people out of it.
Cows jump fences, too. I don't know why, but they do.
Grass is always greener on the other side. That's what they say.
To you bad one, you don't know.
I'm not so sure that's true.
Okay, and so you have partners here with you as well. So Bruce, how long have you been working with Charlie?
Not quite two years, but I've known Charlie for a number of years. So really humbled when he came and said, would you, what would you think about this opportunity? And, you know, my relationship with him is a real strange one, because most of the time, I'm embarrassing him, because I tell the way I see it, at least how I feel about it. But quite honestly, I never would have done this for anyone else. This is, this is an exceptional guy. He really cares about his community, genuinely cares about his community. And I just, I've never seen that. And yeah, I wanted part of that. I wanted to be part of it. And he and Mike and all the other people have been so gracious. I mean, I've lived here 30 years, but-
When you say here, Magnolia or Montgomery County? Oh, you lived in Magnolia.
Yeah, two houses, two different places, but always been Precinct 2. So I knew Charlie could keep an eye out on what, you know, the places I was investing in.
Yeah, so you've known him.
Well, you know, as we all know, your house is your biggest investment.
Sure.
I wanted it in a place where I knew the people who were running it, and I had faith in them. So yeah, I feel very blessed to be there.
That's why it's important to go vote, too, right?
Yes, it is.
Can I make a comment on that real quick?
Yes, of course.
My comment on that would be, you said two things that were really exceptional. Everyone needs to get out and vote in this election. It's a very, very important election, and we tend not to vote in the runoff elections. And it's probably the, other than the real end election, people really need to get involved. Take a look at what is, what is at stake here, and go out and vote. And the other thing you mentioned was the market that you held on every month. We miss it. It was a lot of fun.
Oh, yeah.
The band playing, and all the people would come out. So yeah, good times.
It's nice to get out, but that's why we need to control things, so that everybody can get out and move about a little more freely. I don't know, I have no idea what's true, what's not true, when it's going to end. So let's just all take care of each other, so that we can get on with it, right?
It's just, it's hard to do. I mean, I shook hands, and I know, it's hard to get out of that habit. I mean, me and you would hug necks, you know, three or four months ago. You don't do that anymore. It's hard to get out of that habit, but it's something we've got to do right.
You step back when somebody gets close in the grocery store. You look out for yourself. And I mean, I get criticized all the time for getting out by my relatives that live out of the area. I personally grew up in Burbank, California. So Texas is a lot different. But I've been here since '82.
I was fixed in Southern.
I've been here for a long time. My kids are Texans. They wouldn't live anywhere else. Three boys, so I get it. I get all that. So, you know, what exactly does a Commissioner do? And I mean, what do you do? What is your role, Bruce? Helping him, just whatever he says?
Well-
Kind of?
You know, anyone, anyone that knows Charlie knows that, quite honestly, you'd be an idiot not to listen to what he has to say. He's got more institutional knowledge than just about anyone. He's lived here. He's been involved in our precinct. So I kind of consider myself Grease, to be honest with you. I know that sounds odd, but Charlie's got a vision. I know what his vision is. He shares it with me often. We also have the other employee who you were talking about, Don Dean, who we're blessed to have.
I like Don.
Don's a great guy. Don is, Don is an experience, just like Charlie is. I mean, it's an experience. You need, it's a unique, they're unique individuals. So Charlie's got a vision. Don can carry it out, and I'm who you call when it's not working right, or something needs to be done differently. I'm the Grease. I'm the one that helps it actually move a little smoother, hopefully. That's at least what I try to be.
You're the nudge guy.
Sort of. I mean, I'm surrounded by very capable people, quite honestly. I really am. They know what they're doing. They were very patient with me, for me to get up to speed and really understand what it was they were doing and how they were doing it. And I'm not up to speed. I bug them all the time. I call them about the most mundane things, but you know, I'm not going to learn unless I ask them, and I'd be a fool not to use the asset.
And that's what you got to do. That's how you learn, with feet on the ground.
Exactly.
We have an intern here today who's doing the same thing.
Right.
So I mean, you got to start somewhere and move on. I mean, when you became Commissioner six years ago, did you know all the answers?
You know, that is very important. I worked 14 years thinking this was going to be a breeze, just walk in and do it. And it's not. I can never-
The breeze hasn't come yet, has it?
If the breeze is here, I want to know where it's at, because I haven't found it. Because I just knew that I'd be able to walk in and start doing the job. That's not the case. It's, it's not. And like Bruce is saying, when you come from the private industry into county government, it's different. It's two different worlds. You have to do things different as a county employee. And it takes a while to get that down. And again, I'm not saying I've got it down. I say, I think I've learned most of it, and I, and I try to do my best every day, and I try to go home every day thinking I have done something and improved something. That's my goal, is to try to make every day just a bit better.
So you take it to heart, everything you do. Everything matters.
Every decision I make on that court, every decision I make, I don't do that for me.
Because you know you're going to hear about it, right or wrong.
And I do.
Right? Because you're in the limelight.
And you can never make everybody happy. No matter what decision I make today, I'm going to make somebody mad, I'm going to make somebody happy. And what you just have to take it to heart, do what's right for the county. It's not just the Precinct 2, it's the county. I have to make sure-
Oh, absolutely. That's what people don't realize, you know. Even if you don't live in Precinct 1, whoever is, you know, Commissioner, like Robert Walker will be the Republican, and I don't know if he has someone running against him or not in November.
I believe there is someone. I'm not sure it is.
Nonetheless, you know, even though I live in Precinct 2, what happens with Robert Walker is important to me, because it's a collective unit that makes decisions.
Something as simple as Fish Creek Road going through the middle of your subdivision over there, goes all the way from, it really goes all the way from 249, it, Tomball-Corville Road, and runs all the way up to 105. So whatever decisions are made anywhere between affects Precinct 1, affects Precinct 2, affects Harris County. You have to look at all that. Whenever you start making these road improvements, and we deal with roads about more than anything on a daily basis, but when you-
That's the main thing.
When you start looking at what you're going to try to do, you got to realize what you, how you're going to affect somebody else. You have to look at all that.
Well, I mean, the budget, even the county budget and things like that, that's collectively done, and depends on, you know, where your money is going. You know, we have a lot of things that is paid for us. I mean, you take the library, who was on the show last week, and they have a lot of things. People don't realize, everything they do is absolutely free. And where does that money come from to offer free?
Yes.
You know, it comes from somewhere.
Yes, it comes right here from Montgomery County.
You don't think about it.
No, you don't.
But there's a lot of different things. I know Craig Doyle was on here before talking about what all your money pays for, as a taxpayer, as a homeowner.
It's amazing when you see that. And I don't have that list. I can't-
And I'm not going to ask you that.
How many different departments that we have that's funded by your county taxes?
But anyways, but that's why it's all good to be collectively. So as a Commissioner, though, you do things besides road maintenance, which is a big chief thing, and we'll go back to that. But there's a lot of weird things that nobody knew that you do, that you're accountable for.
Well, we're accountable for the budget. We're accountable for the tax rate. We're accountable for the collections. We're accountable for-
Mosquito spraying?
Mosquito spraying, ditch digging.
I hear them out.
Street signs.
In wood forests.
And this year is different from any other year. You know, last year, or the year before last, we would try to make at least one round in the precinct spraying mosquitoes, at least once a month.
I hear it more often.
We bumped it up to at least twice a month now, trying to make sure, we're trying to take care of everything with all that's going on.
I think it's Sunday nights I hear it.
He started it early this year, too.
Yeah, and we started early.
I don't remember ever hearing them before, but I do now.
Yeah. We're just, again, we're trying to stay ahead of-
Trying to stay ahead.
Something.
So people would call you for dead animals?
Mm-hmm. We, we-
Really?
Anything on, if it's on a county road or county rideaway.
So like a deer, or anything like that? You remove deers?
Yes.
I did not know that.
Would you like one?
There's probably a lot on Fish Creek, huh? I see a lot. They run across there.
Certain times of the year is different. You know, when the rut comes in, we have deer everywhere that we pick up. Now, we may not come out and pick up a squirrel or something like that, but if it's a dog, and I hate to hear the dogs, or something like that, or deer, and hogs.
Alligators? You ever had alligators?
We've had one, yes. We really have. Had one alligator. And hogs are everywhere.
We had a call for, to come and get a dead animal, because the eagles were eating it. And-
It wasn't eagles, it was buzzards.
But they said it was eagles.
There's a big difference.
We were like eagles.
There's a big, yeah.
Eagles.
Okay, so tell me about what's going, so I noticed, like on Fish Creek. So that's a good thing, it's being widened, because people actually go pretty fast. I don't know if you know, but they go pretty fast on Fish Creek. My husband always complains about that. Sheriff's Department patrols that quite often. But it looks like it's coming along, and it will be one area for two, three lanes, and then the other area, it looks widened.
It is. Now, and what you're looking at is, from 1488 north, you know, you've got the two lanes east direction, and a turn lane down the middle, then you've got that all the way up to the new bridge at Fish Creek, or Lake Creek. That bridge, you know, here again, that bridge is running behind schedule. There's no doubt about that. But there's a lot of things that people-
But it still looks like it's progressing.
It's coming along, but there's a lot of things people don't really understand.
I really looked at it, went over that way yesterday.
Just because there's not somebody working on the top deck of that bridge, doesn't mean they're not working underneath it.
Yeah.
But again, it could rain right now today, and have a soda, six or eight inches, and not rain a drop here, and Lake Creek's going to flood. And you're not going to be able to get under the bridge. And that's happened probably a dozen times since that bridge has been under construction.
I don't think we want to talk about flooding, do we?
We don't want to talk. Well, I mean, that's just one of the-
I wasn't breaking it up.
That's just one of those natural things that you're going to have to deal. We're going to have to deal with it. And again, so the construction on the bridge is maybe running late, but there's a lot of things that will factor into that. And then you've got the overpass at 2854 and McHale Road, which is the other north end of Fish Creek. All of those, once those are done, you'll have a four-lane-
We need a signal there.
It's coming.
Is it?
You've got to get the bridge in. Got to get the overpass in.
We really need a signal where it goes to 2854. That's craziness.
That's where the signal's going. Soon as the overpass is done, the signal will take place.
In 2020?
Yeah, it'll be this year. Yeah, it should be. Yes.
Weather permitting.
I can't-
I've seen some bad accidents there.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting, and all this, all the COVID stuff.
I can't.
Yeah, but it looks like it's going pretty good. McHale Road going towards 105 as well. It looks like it's progressing.
That turned out to be a great job there.
Yeah, and that'll look quite challenging, because there was a lot of utility poles, things like that.
A lot of stuff in the way, had to be moved, and then it took us a while to do that.
That looks challenging to do that.
Radio tower.
Yes, saw that.
We went around the radio tower.
I saw that, too.
Well, that was a creative solution to a big problem. Saved a lot of taxpayer money.
Yeah, we keep our RV out that way.
Yeah.
And we're only seven minutes from the lake.
Well-
You know, but depending on traffic and-
But McHale Road was one of the best jobs we've done in a long time.
Yeah, that looks good. So you have on here, you've been talking about McHale Grand Pines. Where's that?
Now, Grand Pines is what we were calling the extension of Nichols-Saw Mill Road south of Magnolia. If you're familiar with Nichols-Saw Mill Road, that's a road that will get people over to 2920, 290, now the new 99. And if you went Nichols-Saw Mill Road, you had two different ways to go. You could go through a community and a bunch of neighborhoods to the, headed back to the east, or you could go south and go through another community and neighborhoods. We took this Grand Pine Road, Grand Pines Road, and we went right behind all these communities through quite a few large property owners, or property owners. And we went from Nichols-Saw Mill Road at Butera-
Do not fall off.
Butera, out to Sanders Cemetery Road, and it would cut off probably 20 minutes of your drive going through all these neighborhoods.
All the communities.
And it made it safer staying out of these communities.
Yeah, and they didn't want you in the communities either. They don't want all that.
It just made it so much safer, and it's such a nice road. And it was, that was another one of those, it was a good project till we got tied up with the Corps of Engineers. We had some wetlands out there, about big as this table right here, that they wanted to say you could navigate up and down it. And we told them it was a mud hole, and it took us three years to convince them that it wasn't, and that you could not navigate it.
Things don't move real fast with roads, do they?
No, they don't. And if you do, if you run into something like that, it just, it comes, it becomes a challenge. And I could have dealt with it one of two ways. I could have spent almost $2 million buying what they call flood credits and got the road built three years ago. Or I could fight and disagree with the Corps of Engineers and prove that it was not, you were not able to navigate it, and convince them that they were wrong. And that's what we did, but it set the project back about three years.
What are flood credits?
If you're, if you're going to have to go through any kind of wetlands and do any kind of mitigation on wetlands, you have property set aside in different parts of the county where you can claim credits. This is a wetland that you'll never use, but you take these credits for this, what you're going to, what you are going to-
Build up.
Modify, or do something different, and it offsets one another. So, but I didn't have any of those credits. But I could have bought enough for about almost $2 million to satisfy the Corps, and I wasn't going to do that.
Okay, so it was a good outcome.
It was a good outcome. They might have delayed the project a little bit, but it was a good outcome.
Okay, we're going to take a little break, and we're going to hear from your partners, who are also sitting at the table a little bit more, too. So I'm Margie Taylor, and this is sponsored by Roger Stein Chiropractic, and we'll be right back. So I'm Margie Taylor, and this is sponsored by Roger Stein Chiropractic, and we'll be right back. Since two thousand and four, Roger Stein Chiropractic has offered spine and joint manipulation services to residents of Montgomery County and surrounding areas. Conditions treated include lower back pain, migraines, headaches, whiplash, carpal tunnel, neck pain, sciatica, joint pain, sports injuries, herniated discs, and complications from pregnancy. Roger Stein Chiropractic, led by Dr. Stacy Rogers and Dr. Brian McGee, is an integrity verified chiropractic clinic. Call nine-three-six-four-four-one-nine-nine-nine-zero for an appointment, or visit rogerssteinchiropractic.com.
Path to the Plate is a research-based education program that helps consumers understand how their food choices impact their health by making the connection to agriculture, learning about how food is grown and produced, and how consumers can make better food choices for themselves and their families. Path to the Plate is all about dispelling myths and misconceptions. Find out more online at pathtotheplate dot T-A-M-U dot E-D-U. We are Texas A&amp;M AgroLith Extension, helping Texans make their lives better.
This is Rick TRC. Every Tuesday on my show, Afternoons with Lone Star from three to seven, I play back-to-back classic rock hits. That's right. I like to call it a two-for Tuesday or a three-for whatever it is you'd like. Call the request line, nine-three-six-six-four-seven-three-seven-seven-six, or message me on Facebook, Afternoons with Lone Star, make a music request. That's right, you can do it. Here's what else. Go over to our website, irlonestar.com, get the app on your phone. It's easy, you'll like it.
What is homelessness? Have you seen parents struggle to find a job without having transportation or childcare? What about the children sleeping in cars with nothing to eat? Families shouldn't have to struggle to survive, and children should not be homeless. Family Promise of Montgomery County serves the needs of homeless families and their children. Learn about ways you can help and learn about partnership opportunities at www.familypromiseofmc.org, or call our day center at nine-three-six-four-four-one-eight-seven-seven-eight.
Hey y'all, it's DJ Mike from Dance Time in Texas. Join me Monday through Friday at eight AM as I count down the top ten Texas red dirt songs that are packing the dance floor. I'll be featuring local artists and the story behind the hits, shows in the area, as well as new songs that make you wanna dance. It's Dance Time in Texas with DJ Mike on Lone Star Community Radio, one oh four point five KCZW and one oh six point one KZCC, Conroe, Texas, or online, irlonestar.com.
Lone Star Community Radio is looking for those who are interested in hosting their own talk show, with monthly and weekly slots available on Conroe's FM one oh four point five, one oh six point one, and on irlonestar.com. Start your own podcast, create your first YouTube channel, and be on TV. Contact Lone Star Community Radio online at irlonestar.com, or call the station message line at nine-three-six-six-four-seven-three-seven-seven-six.
And we are back. Again, I'm Margie Taylor, and this is Conroe Culture News out of downtown Conroe, Lone Star Community Radio, FM one oh four point five, one oh six point one, live streaming, irlonestar.com, and Conroe Culture News on Facebook. So you can follow up later, there will be a YouTube of this that will be posted as well. So we are here with Charlie Riley, Commissioner Precinct Two, and I also have Bruce Berger, who's Chief of Staff, and Michael Silvio, um, who also offices out of Charlie's office as an officer.
Okay.
So tell me about that.
So let's, let's talk about a, a deputy constable working out of a commissioner's office. You know, we get calls for everything. It's not just roads, it's not, we get calls for speeders, we get calls for people dumping trash, we get calls for trucks tearing up the road, we get calls for, for all of it, and it's, it's, it's not.
People burning outside on property?
That's right, and burning, uh, just you name it, we get calls for that. And, and my thought was, I would like to have somebody assigned to my office that would come to the office every morning, and if there was something that we knew from the day before or we knew was going on today, we could send them out there right then. I'm, I'm not trying to circumvent the sheriff's office or circumvent dispatch or any of that, but it makes it so much easier. If you were to call and say, hey, they're burning behind my house over here on Central Pines, we know where we're talking about, instead of me having to call sheriff's office or somebody else to get somebody dispatched, I pick up the phone and call Silvio, or he's in the office and telling me, I need you to run by there and do it, and nine times out of ten, he's there before.
Anybody else.
Or, or they've done left, or they've quit, or that, so we, we have a better chance of, of, of getting the situation solved that way. So Silvio is in our office, he's, he works, uh, he's commissioned and he works as a precinct five deputy constable out of Chris Jones's office, assigned to our office. So like I say, if somebody calls about something, we call Silvio, and we send him on his way over to take care of the speeders or the trash or whatever it is. Now, what we are doing now, we've got another deputy that we've, uh, we've hired for precinct two. We, we have a problem in Montgomery County, and uh, I've been trying to get a commercial vehicle division for Montgomery County for a long time, and, and nobody seems to be real interested in it. But if you were sitting in my shoes, uh, as precinct two commissioner, and you see all these big road jobs, uh, that are going on in and around precinct two, and even through precinct two and up in precinct one and down in precinct three, every job that, that these people are doing, they have to have dirt from somewhere, and we're getting just overrun with dump trucks and big trucks and construction vehicles, and I've got a lo- I've got probably a dozen eighteen-foot wide little old county roads that had thirty-five or forty homes on it that was not intended to have eighteen-wheelers, eighty thousand pounds, running up and down hauling dirt for these big construction jobs.
Or wrecking the streets too.
Or just hauling to anybody's house. Well, we've, we've, uh, we were fortunate enough to have a man that has forty-three years' experience with DPS as a commercial vehicle enforcement officer. He wanted to retire, so when he retired from DPS, we convinced him to come over here and work with us, and he's, he's licensed, he's, uh, he's got all of his credentials to be a licensed and wait officer for Montgomery County. The problem is, in our statute, it does not say deputy constables can do that, so we are in the process, matter of fact, we're having a meeting Wednesday with, uh, the two senators and, and three representatives from Montgomery County to get a bill passed through the legislature to change that, where the deputy constables can enforce commercial vehicle inspections and waits and all that. And, and one of their things that they're, 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 they're kind of, uh, they were kind of afraid of when we first talked to them about that, they thought we were wanting to get out on fourteen eighty-eight, I forty-five, and all these big foreigner market roads and highways and stop trucks and inspect them. That's not what I wanna do. I want these trucks that are tearing up my county roads or any county roads in Montgomery County to number one, either get right and quit being overloaded, or if you're gonna tear the road up, we're gonna figure out a way that you have to pay for.
So it's a way of regulating it.
Yes, to fix the roads back. I can't go.
Cause they don't really care, they're just using the road.
They don't. They're, they're going from one point to the other, they don't care whose road it is, they don't care what they do. I, I say that, some of them do, most of them are pretty good guys, some of them are coming out of Harris County.
For doing a job.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're saying, if you're gonna run in precinct two especially, uh, uh, you're gonna do it right, and then hopefully we can get this through out of Montgomery County, because I'm not the only one, I promise you, that's getting roads tore up by commercial vehicles. And Silvio, uh, he hasn't got his credentials yet, but he was supposed to go to school back in March or April, I think, and here, you know, that was canceled to get his accreditation to do his truck inspections.
Zoom meetings.
So, you, you know, they won't even do that. But, but you know, when we sat down and talked to Senator Nichols and, and Brandon, they were just surprised that these guys can pull over a truck right now, know it's overweight, they can do an inspection. Some of these guys don't even have driver's license, some of them don't have blinkers, some of the brakes wouldn't, there's so many things wrong with these trucks, and guess what? They gotta let them go because they're not, they're not certified to do anything like that. So that's, that's where we're up, that's what we're up against, and that's why I'm, I'm pushing so hard to get this done. We've got to get that cleaned up. We've gotta take care of that.
Seems to make sense, because if they're regulated, then they won't be tearing the streets up, that then we have to have money to go pay for the streets.
Yes.
Right? So we're wasting money, taxpayer money, having to clean up from other stuff that goes on.
That's right.
Okay, gotcha.
So we'll have two officers out of precinct two and, and Constable Gable in precinct three, has, he's got two that we're ready to go once we get the legislatures to do what they need to do, and we tried to do it last year and it got bogged down, and, and it didn't, didn't work, but we've, we've kind, we've convinced them that this really needs to go through, and I think we'll be able to get that done this next, uh, next year through Austin.
Okay, well, good. That's good news. I didn't know anything about that. So thank you for sharing that.
We just, we, there's so many trucks that are running up and down these roads that don't need to be on the road.
Well, you're absolutely right. If they were to go down my little tiny streets that are already narrow that you can hardly back out of, which is another whole thing.
Well, and if they can't stop between here and.
I mean, I don't even know how fire trucks can get down there.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the.
Especially when people park on the street.
And here again, that's another thing, when we, when we, we waited, in my opinion, Montgomery County waited too long to change their rules and regulations on how wide a street has to be. You know, for years.
I know City Conroe's had that controversy too.
All you had to have was an eighteen-foot wide street. Well, that, that was good forty-five, fifty years ago. It wasn't good twenty-five years ago when everything started happening here, but we waited till two thousand and seven to, to upgrade our standards. Well, how many, I've got, I've got, uh, almost nine hundred miles of road, and I probably don't have two hundred of them that are built to the new standard.
Yep.
The rest of them are either sixteen, eighteen foot wide.
So how are they building them in communities out there, new developments?
In the new development, it has to be twenty-four foot wide, the base, and your driving lanes have to be twenty, uh, twenty-two foot wide. So there's six foot on either side of what you used to drive it on right now today. So, it's a lot of difference, a lot of difference.
Lot of work. So, everybody thinks roads are boring, but at least, you know, we need the roads, right? We gotta go from here to there. People don't like just hanging out at home, even though that's what we've been doing. Uh, you get in your car and you gotta go somewhere, and what infuriates you more than anything is when you can't get there quickly.
Well, and again.
The straightest, easiest way without sitting in traffic.
Traffic don't stop at the precinct lines or county lines, either one. They're coming. People are still coming to Montgomery County. It's a great place to be, and there's a lot of people trying to get here, and I think there's gonna be more people trying to get here.
I think so. I remember when I worked at the food bank down the road here, we had, I think, four hundred and fifty thousand people in the county, and then it was edging up to five hundred. I think we're like over six fifty right now, over six fifty thousand?
We're gonna be over seven with this next census.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it is growing. Um, and so FM fourteen eighty-eight, that's interesting to me because it, it's called Magnolia, it's called, uh, Conroe, it's called The Woodlands, depending on where you're standing. You know, so, uh, let's take that area over by the Escape Theater, that's your area, right, precinct two? So they call that New Magnolia. That's the new term, but yet it has a Conroe address, and like you have Office Evolution there, The Woodlands, and I'm like, what?
You know, it's, it's all, it's all area codes is how they do the addresses. I mean, that's why, uh, everybody, well, I live in Magnolia. Well, and I'm, I'm, I'm sometimes confused. Well, I live in Magnolia, and there's eleven hundred people in Magnolia, in the two square, in the two square miles. But there's two hundred and thirty-eight thousand people in Magnolia area codes, so, but I live in Magnolia. Well, and, and you know, forever, uh, we're, we've got a, there's a Whataburger coming to Magnolia. Okay, where's it at? Well, it's out at twenty-nine seventy-eight Neget Lane. Well, to me.
Yep.
I, I, I have a hard time thinking that's Magnolia. I'm thinking this Magnolia, so it's confusing.
Fish Creek, like where you're building a bridge, I think that's Magnolia.
Yes.
Isn't it?
Yes.
But yet, my address is Montgomery, and down the street is, you know, the Conroe ISD school, and yet when I have something that can't be delivered to my PO box, my, not my PO box, my mailbox, it's right there in the subdivision, I have to go way the heck out to the Montgomery Post Office, which is not close by.
And that's not easy to get to.
No, and they're not always open, so it's.
There's not a good way.
No, no, it's all crazy. So what are you gonna do about that?
We're building roads as fast as we can.
I thought you said you wanted somewhere to go for a road trip.
Uh, no, not necessarily. A fun road trip, fun. So, and what else? What else is going on out there in the offices?
Well, one of the things, and again, I think modesty is making him not address it, is, uh, one of the things that I would ride around with, uh, Charlie, we'd get over by the hospital district, and his mood would change. And one time I said, why are you upset? He was obviously upset, and he said, you know, I fear that if we don't do something about the traffic over here, that something bad is going to happen. Well, I've now sat in two meetings with him where he came up.
Are you talking on Loop three thirty-six?
No, I'm talking about.
Two forty-two and I forty-five.
Yeah, and, uh, with the traffic and, you know, uh, it's gone through court, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I can say it. Um, you know, I try to work with the budget that Charlie gives me to work with, and, um, in one day, he gave, he realized this is an issue that affects the entire county. And yes, part of it's on pre- in precinct two, but part of it's not. It was precinct four. And Charlie got together with the commissioner of precinct four and Text Dot and determined that it was worth it for the safety of the people in Montgomery County for us to give a substantial part of our budget to help build the flyover heading east off of forty-five to alleviate a lot of the ground level traffic by the hospitals.
Been hearing about that.
Well, you know, again, I'm gonna hear about this when we leave here, but I don't care. It, it was brilliant, and it was the second meeting I had sat in where people were throwing their hands up, not knowing what to do, and all of a sudden, he was, well, we all know what we need to do, and he came up with a solution. And that solution, sure, you know, in a way, it benefits us because we're part of the county, but that's the global kind of, he has a vision in his mind, you know, and it's great when you sit there and you watch it.
Oh, I used to travel that way when I lived out in Splendora all the time.
He's gotten all the money now committed to what we need to build that, and they're gonna start on that right away. He left it stubbed out when we built the flyover that came back into our precinct. It was stubbed out to the other side, we just didn't, you know, there wasn't money to do it.
They needed it.
They needed it badly.
Mets, Mets area.
Yeah, absolutely, and we, we work with precinct four, you know, hand in hand, and he got that done, so I'm really excited about that.
It's not about you, it's about we, it's about everybody, right? Everybody has to work together.
It's so, it so was. It, you know, uh, you wanna be proud about what you do for, uh, your, for your living every day, and you know, for me to come home and be able to say, look what he's done, look what he did now, and in a positive way, look what he did. He's gonna, he's gonna alleviate this, and, you know, I don't wanna be overly dramatic, but he's, he's gonna save lives with what he did, and.
Yes, I've heard about all of that, and then there were some scary things going on.
One of the things that bothered me, uh, more than anything, is we, we had all the hospitals in a meeting at the Woodlands Chamber talking about the, the problems with the traffic, and, and, and the, the lady from Texas Children, I can't remember her name right now, she looked me in the eye and said, when your kid or grandkid gets sick, what do you do? Well, I, I said, I pick him up, I throw him in the, and before I could say car, I realized what she was telling me. These people that are taking these kids to Texas Children in their cars, they don't have the ambulance with the sirens, the horns, the flashing lights, all that. They're trying to get through that traffic jam like everybody else with a sick kid that needs to be in the hospital.
And it's right in that area.
That scared me to, to no end.
And that is like the hubbub of all of our medical.
That is.
Mini Houston Medical Center.
Even a, even an ambulance trying to get through there is, it's terrible. Not all the time, but most of the time, in the evening and the mornings, it's terrible. So, the flyover, the flyover will alleviate probably eighty percent of that problem. It really will.
That's great.
So.
That's good. And, and, uh, it was tolls, but now it's not, correct?
We took the tolls off.
Cause it, it was paid for.
It was paid for, uh, but the tolls from those two flyovers were to build a third one, but again, when we set a toll of twenty-five cents and fifty cents, we were, it was gonna take us forever to try to get enough money to build that third flyover. And when you start looking at what you could do, what you had, and where you could pull money together, that's what we did. We sat down, pulled it together, and we, we sat down with Text Dot, and Text Dot is excited. They know it needs to be done. They, they didn't have it on their radar because we were supposed to do that, so when we told them we had the money put together, they're excited about doing the job. Uh, will we get it done by the end of this year? No. Will we be under construction by the end of this year? There's a good chance that we will be under construction.
But you're moving forward. That's the big step, is you're moving forward, trying to get it done.
Yes.
Oh, he will get it done. It won't be a try. He will get it done.
Good, good. What other projects do you work on with the other commissioners?
Uh, me and, me and Mets have worked on, uh, trying to get David Lane, which is another project with Shenandoah City of Conroe and him. It's not even in my precinct, but you know, I sit on the HDAC board down there, so I try to, uh, communicate with who needs what and what's a good project, what's, uh, what, what's one that probably needs to be turned in to, to get funded through HDAC, and, and we've turned in David Lane twice, and it's just not, it just was not on HDAC's radar, uh, as a big high priority, until I think. radar as a big, high priority, until I think when Methodist Hospital went to put on their addition of, I don't forget how many rooms they're doing, they've got another 300 or 400 rooms that they're adding on to their hospital. And then when the football stadium went in a few years ago, you know, all of that changed that whole dynamics back behind the mall and...
There's a lot going on back there now.
There is, man, it is.
That whole entertainment area.
And it's all David Lane. And now they realize that that could run parallel with 1488 up to 242 as another way to relieve some of that traffic, so...
And 1488 and 242 are evil.
They are evil. And 2978 and 1488 is, is again...
I really hate 1488.
There's just...
I'm in my little Mini Cooper, like on my toes, trying to look, and I go, okay, there's an opening, bam.
Yeah, yeah.
At least your car's fast enough to do it, so...
Right, and hopefully there's an officer.
Better take it quick.
He already took a picture.
But again, 1488, you know, there's people talking about widening 1488 to six lanes from 2978 back to 45. I understand, it needs to be done, there's no doubt.
It's crazy.
But what I need to look at, again, to help the whole county, I need 1488 through Magnolia's four lanes before we start addressing six lanes on the other end.
Yeah.
I gotta get that...
So you're all the way to 45, right?
I'm from 45 all the way to Waller County on 1488, all of that's mine.
Wow.
So I've gotta get it through Magnolia, and then we can go add two lanes on the other end. I'm not trying to penalize anybody, but I need to get it done.
That's okay, just work on what you got going and get her, get her done, and then we'll move on to the next thing.
And then I gotta get the relief route around Magnolia. And then 2978, that's been a nightmare, that's gotta continue.